Mr. Dibiasiu?
Here.
Mr. Vegan?
Here.
Ms. Menard? Father Jay?
Here.
Dr. Narra?
Yes. We have a call. According to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty F, any member of the public may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting. A member of the public who wishes a recorded meeting must first notify the chair and must comply with the reasonable requirements regarding audio or video equipment established by the chair not to interfere with the meeting. Anyone recording?
Mr. Maddow? Yes.
Okay, pleasure, ladies.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, motion to approve the May seventeenth, two thousand forty-three. Is it second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Student report, Brian? Students had a great time at Six Flags. Over a hundred students attended and had fun. Sophomore students had a great time at Andy Lee Park, and freshman students attended Waterwood. Had fun. Baseball and softball teams had a great season. Our track and field team has taken students to nationals for the first time in many years. Our drama club had two tournaments today, and many students took part in it.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions or comments?
Quick.
Yeah. Standard.
Right, what I like, you like the moose cassis on TV, you get it off their balls. I like that. It's a good call.
Does anyone sign up for citizen input?
All right, two point one MSBA. Just yet, the contract Colliance has successfully and finally finalized the negotiation of the contract. I believe it's getting worked on now in terms of drafting it, but I'm going to recommend that the committee approve the contract as negotiated and allow Mr. Jennings to sign. In accordance with the MSBA, Mr. Jennings can sign. I would recommend that the body of the judge.
Make that motion?
Is it second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, now the MSBA school building committee update.
Tim is here, so.
Sure. Obviously, the contract, okay, there's a big effort, so we kind of have to be able to pass that around, but the all the work in the pre-construction phase, work was continuing even though the contract hasn't been finalized. We actually just came back from sixty percent construction document estimates. So reconciled estimates with the OSIP insurance policy savings puts the project on budget. So we didn't have to go through that massive value engineering process that we went through in the D D. So we'll be taking it to submit it to the MSBA if it allows to succeed. We should expect comments back from them in two weeks, and then we'll have a couple of weeks to respond to their comments, but design team will be moving forward. Suffolk Construction will be moving forward with preparing for summer activities and some enabling packages, working on access, parking, just some site work, just so that when the students come back in the fall, that traffic pattern, those procedures will stay in place throughout construction, so we're not changing things around. We are going to be, we're starting the pre-qualification process. That's where we're required to put out a request for qualifications for different trade packages based on the estimated value of that trade. And so that request for qualifications out, we put it into the central register, it's going to be going on combines in local paper and following all the mass general laws as far as procurement. And once we get those in, we go through, we do the evaluation process. It's really just if somebody had a significant problem on a previous job, it would highlight that, but we don't expect to have any issues most of the time. If you're getting maybe a hundred or hundred and twenty-five packages, you might not move forward with maybe one or two. It's pretty minimal if you disqualify anybody from that process. And so that's kind of our near future milestones.
Any questions, comments?
You want to talk about the community outreach?
No, it's true. There was a meeting Tuesday night with the community here at the two fifty-one room. Thank you, Brian. Were you in attendance?
Yes, I was.
So it was pretty well attended from?
Yep, we had twenty-three neighborhood participants. It was well represented. Evan Kenny from Suffolk, Charlie Roberts from Colliance, and Craig Olson from Castle Booth. Any questions, I will put to them. Very inquisitive, everything from traffic to noise to what was the pattern going to be, and I think it was very well received. There is a second one coming up, going to be approximately in October, first week or so after construction kind of gets ramped up a little bit, but it was very well received. People seemed to leave there nodding their heads that their questions were getting answered. City Councilor Linda Pereira was involved, asking lots of questions also. It was well done altogether, wouldn't you say so, anyone?
Absolutely. We have some expenditures.
Yes, we have plenty expenditures for Colliance, the May, ending May thirtieth of the first, the amount of one hundred and nine thousand four hundred and sixty dollars thirty-nine cents. Castle Booth has their May billing, but nine hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Suffolk has two bills, one's back from April thirtieth, twenty-five thousand, and it lists it as June thirty-first, but I believe it should be the May bill invoice number five, fifty thousand dollars.
You know, motion to approve? Motion to approve the Colliers at the KDA and Suffolk's, the amount that Mr. Kitchen has just written.
Is it second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Was there anything else? One of the hat, did you ask of you?
No, Tim covered everything that's going on, just rating back the KDA and the sixty percent, if they have any questions. And Suffolk's going to be starting as soon as school next week. Starting and getting the, so you'll notice all the parking lots, basically one of the fence will be gone, the separate parking is going to be put in, and they'll be putting up signage and stuff, directing people where they'll be going. Did you end up doing something with the room two fifty-one parking? That was my only concern.
Two fifty-one, room two fifty-one parking could be on the side of the gymnasium, which is currently faculty parking right now. We are still, we are not going to lose handicap parking, that will still be there. Okay, but that's aside, that's right, on the side of the gymnasium, which is now faculty parking, and we're going to try to reserve that for our room two fifty-one.
You could have signs put in.
We'll have some signs.
Yeah, even if they're right among the ground, two fifty-one parking or something like that.
We'll have something, we'll have something visual for our patrons to see. And again, we know that the age bracket of the patrons that come to our restaurant is that we know that the place to walk and how to get there can be an impediment. We don't want that to happen, but we will have that down.
Do you have a break for groundbreaking yet?
The time plot says October. We're not going to stop moving, it's dirt. That'll put them into the thirty month of get the building ready, which will finish itself somewhere around May of twenty-six.
But we can coordinate the groundbreaking and?
Yeah, we're going to, we still have to, when we get back in September, we'll put together something, but maybe you know something, Spedley, we probably should do, talk about it in August, get together with your team and, because I know a lot of people at MSBA and the officials that have been coming back from their summer break, we'll put it on their calendars, if we wait too long, it will not fit their calendars. So we'll come up with a date.
We'll come up with a date.
Come up with a date, and we'll get a send invitation sent out to them.
Yeah, that'll be important to give them some.
Yeah, they have a three-month notice.
Yeah, they're usually, they usually are anxious to come out and for those kind of milestones, the groundbreaking, ribbon cutting, all those types of things.
We will, we meet for our next MSBA, we'll discuss it.
All right. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to personnel, Mr. Bentley?
Yes, where you see as the page with the appointments on it there, these are individuals who have been appointed to work in summer programs, with the exception of one, down towards the end, you see Stephanie Berry, she is an LPN instructor, and Elizabeth, Stephanie Berry, she's LPN instructor. She actually moves on to clinical positions with instructional positions, she changed her mind. So we are currently advertising for clinical instructor, which is good, that will get filled, and we do have Elizabeth Heigh being a health assisting clinical instructor to be sim, a position that was approved last year, the simulation lab instructor. But this is what you see is the Bengal challenge, is the major program over the summertime. That's our ninth grade, potentially ninth graders, get a little flavor of diamond before they step into the building. It's hugely successful, very well attended.
Do they already have signups for that?
Yes.
Did you have a lot of, a lot of ninth graders sign up?
Yes, the form is open until around July fifteenth, but yeah, initially, we're getting a lot. Last year, we did have over a hundred fifteen freshmen. They have that class, it's a pretty good one. Use the date. The two dates will be July twenty-fourth through July twenty-seventh, that's one session. And then the next session is July thirty-one to August third.
So they only attend one day on each?
Correct. Okay. In case someone has vacation on one of the weeks.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have body people.
Yes, you can see before you, people who have applied to be on the Diamond Advisory Board. Again, we encourage their participation. We have Monique Francisco, health assisting, Benjamin Lubow, plumbing, Matthew Lubow, plumbing, John Musula, electronics, and Cynthia Vello, health assisting. You see their brief biography there. Most of them are either Diamond graduates or have some investment in the Diamond community. The recommendation is to appoint the above individuals to the identified programs for a term of three years.
I make a motion?
Motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Next, we do have notifying the committee of two retirements that are upcoming. Claire DeCathie is a senior bookkeeper, and she has been here thirty plus years, she uncle Ed has, and John Travasso is a custodian. He has submitted his letter of intent in August of twenty twenty-four. John has been a real, he's been a real good person on the custodial team, unlike the utility guys, who can go just about anywhere and do anything. He always has a smile on his face. They both are very grateful, that's with notification. Next, you see on the next page, though, is I do have individuals who are on?
Hold until after executive session. That's not executive session. We can come back and deal with that.
Next, we have use of facilities.
We have several requests, first from the Diamond PTO has submitted a use of facilities for scholarship fundraisers, and I will be asking that, and they have asked to have all the fees waived. First will be a car show coming up in September, and the second is going to be a crack fair coming up in November. As you see, my recommendation there is to approve the use of facilities, that request by the Diamond PTO for their three thousand fundraisers, and waive all use of facilities.
Need a motion?
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just before you go on further, there was a D E that already appeared agenda, but it's not in the package, the use of discussion superintendent director. Contract, Ryan Bentley, and he discussed the director of finance and operations contract for Kitchen. Both of those are going to be skipped because they've been handling executive session, come back out and deal with those, they're not part of your package, but it's on agenda.
Next is the E student travel request.
Yes, we do have, this is already been approved by the school committee and a zoo encounter that you folks had, this is to reaffirm that, the Culinary Act program has submitted, and I'll state it took place on June thirteenth, and this was the notification that they did leave the state of Massachusetts to go to Roger Williams in Rhode Island, and the recommendation is to reaffirm, approved by email, rather I said, so I apologize, the approval of the student's travel.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Acceptance of gifts. We have, lucky enough, there's some contacts that have been made, and I will attempt to Mr. Kitchen on this one, too, as a quick mover and shaker on this one, Dick's Sporting Goods Foundation made a donation of two thousand dollars to the golf team to purchase golf equipment. Thanks to that connection, I would ask that the committee to accept the donation made by Dick's Sporting Goods, a amount of two thousand dollars to the golf team to purchase golf equipment.
Need a motion?
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you to Mr. Kitchen on that. Then athletics use for facility. Yes, on that one, for use of facilities, you should see the use of facilities agreement, which is right behind your lien paper there. And again, this is for, it's called L S B Street, and we all know that that actually is the recently closed school that's over there for use of their facilities, which is common, for use of it. The agreement is prestanted, I believe it has been reused by Mr. Kitchen for fiduciary responsibility. Mr. Kitchen, do you want to add anything to it?
The other thing, can I ask this question, is this, do we know that those facilities also have other facilities there? And because we're tied into a contract one more year, if we wait and somebody else supplies that, we could lose those facilities. So why aren't we looking to secure those facilities? So now our baseball and softball teams don't have to have the problem on the buses, number one, and number two, there's more room over there for the teams to be able to do what they need to do.
This particularly, it's just the means of oppression to be able to possibly qualify. Yeah, so it's kind of a, you can actually have a unique acquisition property, which is lease property, thirty-eight, well, additional year out, we just have to do it again.
What I'm saying is, I'd like to, I'd like to secure, you know, we're negotiating with that before somebody else says, hey, I would like to use those facilities to get a contract, whether it's college, whether it's another school, charter schools, whoever, why are we looking to secure those facilities?
Can we approach them, and we had the first rate of refusal or something of that nature, that if there's any other interested party, they come to us first, because we've already have a history with that, right?
I understand the, you have a contract with the Y M C A for one more year, but the amount of money that we're paying in transportation, now that this is opened up, we, even if we just set Bosseti over there, and we got our JV and freshman to be able to go right there, because there was only one field they were letting us use, they wouldn't even let us use the other field in the Y. So this way, we have other fields over here for our baseball and softball teams to use. Why aren't we looking to do that for those JV and just have Bosseti at this, the next year, go over to the Y and finish out the contract, while our JV and freshman, right around the road over here, can go to theirs, which will save us some points, you know, on a bus. I think it's something we should be doing, is try to secure that up, as we all know, it's going to be at least four more years, and we're going to need facilities. So, you know, I just think even for soccer, it's more of an open space, and it's better than our kids, you know, we do have this down here now that we're using, but for our soccer games, you know, we're going to be using the football field as well, or just for football.
Right now, it's just football.
So instead of our soccer team to have a discretion? All away games, which costs us money for transportation, why aren't we looking to put our soccer teams over there for games as well?
I mean, you're still going to use transport as a club, but you know, be allowed to be short drive.
Because you can use one bus to make multiple trips, rather than trying, getting two buses or three buses, and plus the, and plus, we all know that it'd be easy for the parents to show the kids here or whatever, you know what I mean? So I just think that we should be looking to?
Long term.
Long term.
And multi-applications.
You know what I mean?
Just now, for all, maybe soccer, so forth and so on. All right, we have a recommendation here of use of facilities, we need to hold on that, and then we can?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wait back.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
All right, I make that motion to the use of facilities of this contract, so.
All right, I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, and then you can come back to us.
I got my answer.
Okay, H, we have surplus equipment, Mr. Kitchen?
We have a list. Items, building property, multi-tech, metal fat is primarily weldings that we're replacing with the, turn it that we just did. The main background has a, one item, which is also on the skills capital grant, we're bidding out now, copper tray, a couple of items, dental has a couple of items, which, one of which we're auctioning, the other items, we're just going to certainly dispose of. The hospital is going to allow us to continue to sell or auction, or we have, so we have a problem.
So Kitchen, I know, because we had this conversation, so far, you've never really done this before, have you generated revenue relative to this process you've been doing?
To date, you get about, just shy of a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Very good, surplus, which goes into our miscellaneous revenue, and that should be able to cover, and that also, because we're paying, miscellaneous revenue goes into our, also to our E D, we're paying a feasibility payments, which is twenty-seven-five, so hopefully I'm trying to make a question.
Very good. How does, how does the CPR mannequin become obsolete?
It's not, I guess, according to?
I'm just curious, I mean, CPR hasn't changed that much.
No, I guess. I'm thinking this, as far as, it's more of this, I guess, not certified to be used. Top heads. I have some, you, area of folks, if they want.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Need to? All right, any questions who approve the surplus?
Motion made.
Is it second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Bill Ward, authorization?
As I just mentioned, we have, we have, we have gone out for a skills capital research project for advanced manufacturing, which is actually two pieces, it's a sinker, E D and a wire E D machine, advanced manufacturing, that will open up in two twenty-sixth, estimated cost of that, those two machines, twelve, twenty-sixty, perhaps twenty-eight thousand dollars. We're not going to have a meeting after this time, so the chairman will give, the committee will authorize the chair to, to the fullest response of the responsibility, with the recommendation, obviously, perhaps the?
Did it?
Committee?
Yeah, did it?
We can, I'll make that motion that we put those out for a little bit.
And authorize the chairman to sign for the low responsible, the responsibility, responsibility.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Monthly financial report?
We have actually, moving out the share. With the purchases that we've made in the last few months, there's not a lot of large items that we're buying, some of the shops are buying, some of their exploratory items, supplies. I have not seen many purchases on the academic side, science, I'm anticipating, other than that, user support, comfort, view, all of the, and also some of the biologists, the tire reasons and such, so I anticipate having carryover, but hopefully not as much as happened in the past. But, but if I, we deal with about twenty-four of the, that's to start ordering, but I don't think, the only thing that they're putting in is licenses for software, technology, stuff, July, so it's not, but this is our supplies, solid out.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we want the K expenditure approvals. Did you have a few?
Yeah.
We, they already approved the Colliance, Castle Booth, and Suffolk.
Yep, I just listened a lot of this, just so. Cowell is a software, one of our brands, dental health brand. The other, the following four items are from the capital, which are dental, primarily the replacement items for a printer, three D printer and such, and other mannequins. Lapin is a replacement for collision, two tables, so as that were surplus, need to be replaced. Culinary, cafeteria is a new POS system for the student expenditures. Cincinnati is a P F to the press inside the metal pad. Henry Shine again is the auto cameras for the skills capital, semi-primes, speaks for herself, and the freshman trip that was just replaced.
Recommendation to approve all expenditure? Need a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The LPN program, they have an update?
I don't think there's, Ms. Dean, did she log in at all?
She is not.
Okay, she didn't think she would, because she did have an appointment, but I do have her report, and I agree you have it also. The LPN program is making progress, because having a full program. Right now, the full-time day has thirty-eight accepted, part-time day has fourteen accepted, as you see by the report that she did give you, you have twenty-five applicants taking the T E exam, another one, another T E exam, has eight people registered. They set a goal of forty and twenty, but the new goal, they pushed it upwards of forty-five plus twenty, which is, meaning the program is doing well. They have new hire, Stephanie Berry, I mentioned her a little earlier, they interviewed another candidate for full-time lab clinical instructor, said she's going to be recommended for the position, and they have a person who's covering long-term due to the fact that someone is going out on pregnancy leave, and of course, they have one faculty member out on vacation. They do have graduation coming up on next Friday, June twenty-third, at six o'clock. All the school committee, of course, is invited. Will you be a representative of the school community here?
I am planning on attending at this time.
It's going to be in your auditorium, and the air conditioning will be on. Okay. Because we have been there sometimes when it is on. You can, you know, just pick you an enrollment number of where she is on another page, similar to Mr. Mikey with a grid on it. And again, the numbers are healthy. Ms. Dean continues to really push the program, advertise it, and recruit. That is very good.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Then moving on to Pam, House Building, Surfrine.
As you see in front of you, these are the projects that we've worked on in the course of, but twenty-three, twenty-four, and you have a second page for the projects that'll be going into twenty-three, twenty-four. Things are still going to be added to these lists, there's other, other requests that'll be made at this time, and we meet back in, in August, there should be more on these lists for the shops to be doing during the course of the year. Unfortunately, we didn't get a house for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, nothing pan out, rear, and the committee is going to be looking to try to push earlier next year to get something for twenty-two, twenty-five.
Thank you. Moving on to the N, policy, Suffolk, Mr. Dibiasiu?
The, Mr. Vegan, you'd like to do the LPN? Sure, we have the LPN Financial Lady Handbook, find no real major changes from previous years. Make a motion to approve the handbook as, or do you want to do them all at the same time? I talked about it. We got presented.
Well, we do want to do them all.
Okay, so you just want to talk about the admissions as well?
Yeah. So the LPN, like I said, the LPN Financial Lady Handbook, everything looks good, there was no major changes, and we can went through it, it looks great to me, I went over it with the family, and we wrote the great, it was great, as far as the admissions policy, the admissions, we met last week, we went over, the admissions policy moving forward for next year, the only, the only changes that we made to the admissions policy, we
Uh, the only, the only changes that we made, uh, to the admissions policy moving forward, uh, the recommendation of Mr. Miller uh, was the points given for attendance of unexcused absences. Uh, we had found in the past where we had numerous applicants who had the same score because it was such a broad range. Uh, point values, so what we did was we doubled the uh, doubled the point value. So instead of, you know, eighty points, seven points, sixty points, now there's seventy-five points, seventy, sixty-five. And made it a little, a little more interesting to be able to apply points to incoming applicants. The other thing we did was different schools have, um, uh, they have semesters or trimesters in different ways. So getting, uh, the amount of unexcused absences for students, uh, varied from school to school depending upon the structure they had. What we did was we set a date, uh, the thirty-first of the year, that they, that was the date, the cutoff date for unexcused absences. But we're for all of the sending, sending schools. So that would make it easier for us. And the only other thing that we really made a change we made was, uh, if in the event we have a tie uh, of, let's just say Westport has two spots open and is forced, you know, applicants who have the same score. We are going by more of a seniority data when the application was submitted, uh, goes first. So it's, we go by most senior that way and how they can take admission. Other than that, the admissions, uh, policy was pretty contrived. Changes to it.
Yeah, that was all covered. Is no, Miss Mill was here to explain to the subcommittee about the changes and told that you were gonna bring it to.
Policy, subcommittee didn't make any changes to, uh.
We did not make any changes to it at all. And uh, uh, the next one, we made one change. If you look at your community use of school facilities, this has been going on since two thousand eighteen, when we planned, uh, set this policy, uh, updated it, has been done since. Uh, the only thing that we made a recommendation, um, was under auditorium where it says, uh, for profit, a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour with two fifty minimum, we put a maximum of five hundred on that. Uh, there are, there's only a couple of people that use it, uh, for, uh, like a recital. And they hear for eight hours, Thursday, uh, four or five hours Thursday, four or five hours, or eight hours Friday, eight hours Saturday, eight hours Sunday. And then bill came, uh, was was well over six thousand dollars. So to help them and also, uh, we we put max up five hundred. So I, Mr. Bentley and, uh, Mr. Bell said that would be acceptable. That was the only change the subcommittee made to this policy. Other than that, the only other change is, as you see, the main reason of updating this was the janitor. Um, their fee was, uh, was was not brought up to current times, obviously, they, their salary's been increased since two thousand eighteen. So we just, what is two sixteen, so that will change every year and every year. Uh, we'll get this policy, just to update the overtime rate of a, uh, of the average security.
Was was there any changes made to the M A S?
M A S C, no, all we did was we made recommendations, uh, to approve all of M A S C, um, changes that they've done, which we normally do, don't.
Did you review?
We did review. We did review them and, um, I asked so Miss Bentley and Mr. Bell if they saw anything in here that they wanna change, they said no.
All right, recommendation to accept.
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? A three point one always off, we're not discussing. That. P, you have a principal report, Mr. Robello?
Sure, so as you can see, it's still broken up into our priorities, right? And it's still preparing our students to be life-ready as our, as our priority here. And I felt, uh, it was important to acknowledge the job fair again, over ninety businesses represented, um, for our students. And, you know, when you do these events and you hear from these business owners who just rave and rant about, um, our students, it's, uh, it's really a tip of the cap to our teachers and the work that our school's doing. So it was a great day at our job fair. We continue our partnership with the district attorney, uh, Thomas Quinn, uh, sent students to the UMass Dartmouth Teen Safety Summit. Um, on May twenty-fifth, we hosted KW Diversity, um, responding to the needs that we're seeing, especially in the younger grades, learning how to interrupt, uh, racial microaggressions. And I felt it important to, uh, just tell you about some feedback that we got from it. Um, received messages from parents and others, um, talking about how their child ran to the car to tell them about it, how excited and empowered they felt that, um, at his old school, you know, the student went through a lot of different things. Having the school acknowledge those feelings and, um, situations was very important to that child and family. Uh, sending students to leadership academies, this one was for student athletes, the MIA Girls Leadership Academy. We continue to just try to have academics and vocational programming coming together as much as possible. Most recently, our medical assisting and AP students coming together to work on a field day. Student achievement and excellence, O V S, our outstanding vocational student and C and A ceremony were both great. On May twenty-seventh, again honoring, uh, the exceptional work of our students, Gillian Masaraco was Swansea's Student of the Year. Um, I had the honor of presenting, uh, her for that award. Um, she's a great student, a great graduate of ours. Uh, on June first, NBC ten aired a feature about room two fifty-one, calling it a hidden treasure. Again, the world-class education coming out of there, it should be acknowledged and recognized. Great feature that happened right on NBC there. Uh, and then you see awards night and then graduation. I'll highlight graduation, you know, it's our first time holding it at a different home. And it felt disconnected because we didn't use our people, it wasn't our setup. But the behind-the-scenes work by everyone made it run smoothly, uh, smoothly, hour and fifteen-minute, um, ceremony. And we honored our kids and celebrated their hard work. Thanks for all of those who were able to attend. And then the partnerships, again, you see the, the, uh, continued partnership with South Coast Chamber. Um, and our students were able to attend that again this year, sit with them and and network and explore partnerships. Um, we met with Bridgewater State Special Advisor to the President, uh, to talk about some after-hours programming, initial conversations, but very exciting. And then our B C C partnership, um, that's been ongoing for about a year now, uh, about offshore wind and offering, uh, classes for students to get either certificate or associate's degree. Uh, by the time they leave Diamond, it looks like it's gonna, going to come to fruition, uh, but it's still on.
Just, just one question, Mr. Chairman. Um, well, on the, um, job fair, in the future, we have, um, a list of the, uh, actors, uh, a list of who attended. And also just if Miss Bowser knows how many jobs might, uh, were, I should use the word hired, but if they hired any of our students during this job fair. So it'd be nice to know if the job fair is actually working or are they just there to, you know?
Yeah, I would, I would say it's absolutely working.
I know it's a great, I've had to win several times.
If we can put that, some data behind that, absolutely.
Right, thank you. Q, uh, superintendent, you call Mr. Bentley?
Very briefly, if you look at it, as I, I mentioned some of these already, we are having the LPN graduation on Friday, June twenty-third. Uh, you've heard, oh, yeah, the Skills USA National Competition is taking place next week, it's in Atlanta, Georgia. Uh, there will be a number, a good number of refugees in Diamond, but not only Diamond, but also the state of Massachusetts. Uh, the Microsoft Office, uh, program, uh, national competition, we do have three students who qualified and they're going to be going to Orlando. Uh, again, for that competition, June twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth, we wish them good luck, much good luck. Uh, the Cooperative Education Report should be in front of you at your takeout, your desk area, your desk, your location. They, we continue to stay strong with our co-op program. I did have data that maybe linked us with too voluminous, but I asked Kevin to break it down even more of, okay, this is what we do. How do we compare to other schools? Uh, because I don't know exactly what I'm, how we do. Uh, we do very well, and I have that report, uh, it's about fifty pages long, because it's every single school in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts who has a cooperative education program. Uh, in Scania and looking at Diamond and looking at numbers, Fox Valley, Buffalo, Southeastern, Cape Cod Tech. Uh, we, we are at the top, we are at the top. So our co-op, uh, students are employed, uh, it's a very good program. Um, just bringing two things, uh, to you, one, this should be at your station also, it looks similar to this. Uh, the committee had asked, uh, for a breakdown of applications, uh, accepted, what are the numbers? Um, and, uh, what is the range of scores? So, uh, looking at the data that's in front of you, the four communities are represented. You see what the target number was, but then the school committee did vote to add on more, which gives us a new target number for each community. And you can see where we are as of today in yellow, the numbers as of six fifteen, twenty-three. So we will have a very full freshman class entering Diamond in the fall. What are the scores? Everybody's interested in that. If look at the range of scores, uh, you see that at the top left-hand column. And then if you look at how many applications actually came out altogether, where we are, uh, and you do see that it was, uh, seven hundred and thirteen applications. Where Diamond didn't look at. Were very sought after school, but the, the data there is very impressive. My very last thing is to have attention built into this committee about health first and making a connection with them. We have a school-based program here, uh, that is coming to fruition, met with them again. Uh, there is a memorandum of, um, understanding that's being reviewed, that they proposed to us and how they're gonna facilitate us. Uh, I think it's a very good win-win situation. And that was my report.
Any good, any questions or comments? Seeing none, then moving on to our calendar events. As we talked about earlier, LPN graduation is the twenty-third of June, last day of school is the twentieth.
Yes, it is.
And I should pretty much have to.
Put it on the calendar.
Yep, the list of dates we got for meetings for next year, September list, the first Thursday, September the seventh.
Is there a reading for the seventh, not the fourteenth?
No, Elena?
My anniversary, I don't know you guys, just try to do it with me. The seventh is?
September seventh, yeah.
The list of days, this is the seventh, which is the first.
That's the first Thursday.
So is there something on the fourteenth?
That differs from the master calendar that we.
The master calendar has the fourteenth.
My error. Master calendar has September fourteenth as our date.
Okay.
That's what was, yes, I believe, last meeting.
For the list of dates we got, listed the seventh.
That must be, that must be an error.
Okay. We're not meeting in July.
Not meeting in July.
We are meeting in August.
Correct.
The tenth?
The tenth.
Yep. Mr. Jim, we did have one letter, too.
Yeah, I didn't get to.
A long time.
We're doing a calendar event. And then S is, and we don't have it, and it was within the forty-eight hours prior to the meeting. Now, we have correspondence, we have the Veterans Association of Bristol County, sent over a lot of words. Our next meeting is scheduled for August the tenth, and we have a reasonable order of executive session to do.
So it's massive, general, which I've clearly accepted from one, I've got about two, Doug, Charlie, sessions preparation, which is one. So now, also conduct collective bargaining sessions for contract division, non-personal. Individual contracts, Bobby Bailey, record diversity, inclusion, record athletic and social media, Eric Fanoi, Network Systems Administrator, Craig Brogdon, uh, capentry teacher aide, Stephen Cooney, path professional, Jordan Freitas, Scott Kiefer, Karen Glover, district data specialist, Mary Elizabeth Perry, Pam Liaison, Crystal Santos, LPN Administrator Assistant, and liaison, Kobe Silva, Technology Assistant, Patricia Toulon, path professional, Rebecca Ward, ESP Medical Assistant, Paul Kitchen, Director of Finance and Operations, Brian S. Bentley, and from superintendent director. And we will be, and we will be coming out of executive session and they're likely will be both be taken.
Need a motion to go into executive session, need a second? Definitely, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Diviasio?
Yes.
Mr. Vegan?
Yes.
Miss Menard? Father J?
Yes.
Doctor Mara?
Yes.
We're back on.
Okay, we're back in open session, need a roll call?
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Diviasio?
Yes.
Mr. Vegan?
Yes.
Miss Menard? Father J?
Yes.
Doctor Mara?
Yes. Okay, we're going to take up, gentlemen, um, three point one C. And I'm recommending that a motion be made to accept all the individual contracts as negotiated, those being Bobby Bailey, Eric Fanoi, Craig Brogdon, Steve Cooney, Jordan Freitas, Karen Glover, Mary Elizabeth Perry, Crystal Santos, Kobe Silva, Patricia Toulon, and Rebecca Ward.
I make a motion.
Second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Um, now we're gonna take up on the agenda item three point one D. And we are going to, I recommend a motion be made to um, redate the contract of the superintendent director, Brian S. Bentley, to have an effective date of July seventeenth. Um, all other terms and conditions of the contract are being negotiated and signed to be kept in effect.
I make a motion, second, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Then I make a motion to amend the contract of the Director of Finance and Operations, Paul Kitchen, to reflect his doctorate degree in the amount negotiated and to enter into a, an amendment to his contract as negotiated.
A motion, no?
Motion made.
Need a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
And I have nothing further.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Can we do this?
Let me skip it.
Well.
No. No.
We're not doing it.
We, no.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All. Aye.
Aye.